Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. If you want to do what I'm doing, make sure your gadgets aren't gonna squawk or otherwise make noise. And Madam Clerk, when you're ready, roll call, please.
Well, Karen.
Here.
Reeling, present, Harrison.
Here.
Pinkelman, Pitchford.
Present.
Hot.
Present.
Tyler.
Here.
Walrath.
Present.
Werfel.
Here.
Yarborough.
Present.
Elliott.
Here.
You have eleven.
Thank you. In keeping with our new security policy, we've decided to enhance the law enforcement presence for our meetings.
One for each of us.
Right, at least, at least. Might even go with a baker's dozen, who knows? We have minutes to approve from a week ago. Supported by Pitchford, supported by Walrath, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, minutes are approved. We have some requisitions, I think.
Yep, any questions about the requisition list? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will head into life-saving award presentations. We have the sheriff and the undersheriff here and some folks who I understand are well deserving of commendation. Sheriff?
As we said before, we want to thank you for the opportunity to present these awards at a public meeting. So I'm honored to be able to award our deputies for the fine work that they did. I think you've heard before, we have an awards committee that reviews different incidents. This one is, you'll hear from the date to a little longer and make sure as many people could be here somewhere on vacation. We do have seven awards. Deputy Norton was not able to be here, he's won a life saving, so we'll be presenting three life saving and then three commendation awards from the incident that undersheriff Sanders will fill you in on.
Thank you for your time this morning. I think this demonstrates the character of people that we have working for us. It was June twenty-fourth of this year when our staff was alerted, our night shift staff was alerted that an individual in one of the dorms was trying to kill himself. He had just been sentenced to prison. I think he had run out of hope and a will to live. And he had used a razor to significantly cut into his own neck and he was losing a significant amount of blood in the dorm. Our deputies responded to that. And I'd like to point out that the shift supervisor Lieutenant Kristen Barker immediately took control and started directing staff. What was disturbing about this whole incident that in addition to this significant amount of blood loss, this individual continued to fight with the deputies while this was going on. So not only did they have this big mess in this dorm and medical problem, but he continued to fight with them. And this individual had to be restrained while to save his life. Lieutenant Robbins gave clear and concise instructions to everyone involved, including the medical staff. Sergeant Stanner got the inmate restrained and continued, as he continued to fight with deputies and began making appropriate phone calls to the ER staff so they could be aware of what was headed their way. Deputy Norton continued to restrain the individual. And this restraint occurred for over thirteen minutes. Deputy Warman grabbed our red bag medical kit and responded to the scene and also helped with restraining this individual as they tended to saving his life and putting pressure on the wound. So if we could have those three stand up, Sheriff would like to give them the life-saving award.
So I'll read one of the certificates as we hand them out, but it's presented to you with honor and gratitude for actions on June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, where there was a critical incident involving an inmate attempting suicide, their quick response while staying calm, taking immediate control of the situation and being able to write clear and concise instructions were instrumental in saving his life. So with each of them. I know with the pictures at the end, we have the three commendations, but you know, as Greg mentioned, just wanted to recognize the great work that was done under difficult situations.
Thank you, thank you. And continuing on with letters of commendation. Deputy Harrelston also recognized that the inmate had tried to make significant cuts to his arm too. Also helped handcuff the individual behind the back to restrain him so medical help could be applied. If we could have you stand up. Deputy Lardizabal also collected towels from other inmates to help apply to the wound pressure to prevent the bleed, the bleeding, so if you could stand up. And Deputy Noak, Noak also stabilized the individual's neck and restrained him as the others were applying first aid and getting help there. If he could stand up. Thank you, the sheriff will present the letters of commendation.
And again, recognizing the great effort that was done in this incident, so thank you. And then for the award recipients, and that will want to, you come forward. You know, you hold your word. Yeah, you can take them with you. We're watching. Yeah, oh yeah.
Thank you again.
All right, while the chair moves on to go grab a couple of pictures, we're gonna keep the meeting going. As some of, some of those who joined us in attendance are walking out of the room. The next item that we have is a scheduled discussion from Mike Crombie, Midwest Strategy, on some legislative update, I do believe he's joining us virtually, and so we're getting him up and going. Ah, there he is. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Congratulations to the law enforcement folks, that was pretty cool. I remember reading about that in the Herald, but kudos to the board and to the sheriff's department on recognizing those folks. And with that, that's the end of my happy news, is we are just six, five days away from a potential government shutdown. Actually, you know, I think there's been a lot of progress this week. I was a lot more negative last week than I am this week about a deal coming together. I, I still don't know if there's enough time to officially get a budget deal done ahead of the October one start of the fiscal year. Somebody in town affectionately said earlier this week, and I'm gonna steal it, that the goal is to get the budget done by September thirty-third, which I think sort of encapsulates the idea that we're moving towards a deal, but there's still time and processes that, that need to take place to get a deal done. You know, you can't skip steps. It looks like we're gonna have a framework deal on roads. Nothing's been officially announced, but I think that'll likely be a mix of some cuts and some new revenues. I know lawmakers have been looking at a couple of different revenue sources from cannabis to heavy trucks. You know, that's really been the holdup is, would there be a roads deal? And if I'm moving backwards, you'll, you'll maybe recall that the Republican Speaker of the House and the Democratic Governor have been most aligned on doing something on a roads deal. Different proposals, obviously, on how to get there, but at least I think a shared intent of trying to get something done on that. The tough part about passing a budget is that until you get a deal at the top, right, until you work out some of the bigger numbers, it's, it's really tough to figure out the smaller numbers. The individual line items, the individual budgets, and so that has been sort of what has delayed timelines on this. One of the things that I had, had sent an email to Brian in my update, I think you all get those, last week or two weeks ago, was, you know, for organizations to start to think about what a government shutdown means for their organization. You know, county government certainly has its own local revenue sources, but also a number of state revenue sources that sort of flow through the state for different things from the court systems to Veterans Affairs, obviously revenue sharing dollars. And, you know, I think in a short-term shutdown, right, if there's a deal in place, but we just can't get it signed by the governor until October third, that's probably less impactful than if we go three weeks into October and there's not a budget deal, right? There's sort of varying impacts on these things as we hit October one. What I can tell you from a state perspective, if there is not a budget deal, the governor will essentially deem parts of state government either essential or non-essential. So think about corrections officers at our, at our prisons, right? Those are essential, you can't just not staff a prison because we're in a government shutdown. But plenty of other things, processing permits and licenses and some of those things would be deemed potentially non-essential. I don't have an exhaustive list, the, the governor has wide latitude to sort of indicate what she deems as essential or non-essential, but we can make some educated guesses as to sort of what that looks like. And, and that may impact some of the services that are offered locally, either, you know, think about like a local secretary of state branch. You know, voters don't often know which level of government is where, right, or how the funding flows. And so you may, you know, deal with residents in your community that are, are unsure of what's open, what's closed. To complicate all of that, it looks like we might be having a federal government shutdown as well. I don't do federal lobby work, but the news there looks like they're also in, in heavy negotiations to try to avoid a shutdown on October one. And so I'm, I'm sort of encouraging folks to, to think critically about what does a shutdown mean on October one? What does it mean on October third? October eleventh, October twentieth? My best guess, based on the progress this week, is that, you know, we'll have a framework deal in place, maybe even ahead of October one. And maybe it's just drafting the bill, getting the votes done, printing and enrolling it and putting it on the governor's desk that takes us past the deadline, which would be good news, I think, for everybody. But it's, you know, it changes, it feels like hour by hour at this point. I think the other thing that I want to mention, and some of you may have gotten some action alerts from MAC or maybe your locals got stuff from the Township Association or MML, revenue sharing is an item of discussion. And I know this was in some of my, my written updates as well, when the House passed their budget after Labor Day. You know, the House budget cuts revenue sharing, but they put more money into a public safety trust fund. What that means, high level is a greater total investment if that proposal were to have gone through or, or is to go through. But those public safety trust fund dollars are limited to, to certain uses in that public safety space. So there's less flexibility in some of those new dollars. I think some of the concern that we're hearing this week from folks is okay, but if you're looking at seriously cutting revenue sharing to balance the budget on some of this stuff, you, you also have to do the public safety trust fund. We can't, we can't take less over here and not get more over here, whether that's Public Safety Trust Fund or Local Roads or some of those types of things. And so I do know that, and I can send it down if you don't have it, but I think the Michigan Association of Counties does have a, a draft resolution out on protecting revenue sharing, if that's something that the, the commission wants to look at or consider. You know, happy to answer more detailed questions on it, but it's very tough at this part in the process. There are ongoing negotiations constantly, but things seem to change and shift. And so everybody is sort of standing outside of the room trying to figure out where people are at and how folks might want to best balance this budget, whether that's cuts or new revenue or a mix of both. And so we're just trying to monitor that as best we can, but I, I think high level, those are the two things I think you need to think about the most. One is, you know, what is the total potential increase in revenue to local counties? And, you know, maybe that's more money in local roads or more money in a public safety trust fund and less on revenue sharing. What does that mean to all of you? Or are we, are we nervous that we might just get less overall? Obviously, that's a concern. And then, you know, what does that shutdown look like? Short-term, intermediate-term, long-term? But I do believe we'll, we will get a deal relatively quickly, and so I do not foresee a, you know, three-week government shutdown. I think if we miss the deadline, it's, it's just because we ran out of time, not because we didn't get a deal. Maybe I'll pause there, I've got a couple bills I wanted to highlight, but I defer to the chair. If folks want to have talk-through either revenue sharing or government shutdown, because those two things are sort of together.
Yes, sir.
Mike, could you, could you outline the key differences on either side when it comes to funding? What are the like key issues that are getting stuck in this process?
Yeah, it's, it's been a weird, a weird process this year. So typically, folks both move their budgets in the spring, House and Senate. You know, the governor comes out with an executive budget in February, she did that. The House and Senate sort of move their budgets around spring break. And typically, we get a deal right before the Fourth of July. The Senate followed that sort of timeline, the House, you know, I think if you asked them, they would say they wanted to take their time, they wanted to go line by line. They released their school aid budget ahead of the Fourth of July, obviously there wasn't agreement. But they didn't release their general government budgets until right after Labor Day. So that compressed the timeline. As far as sticking points on negotiations at a high level, House Republicans, I think what, what they would tell you is, you know, they wanted to solve the roads issue. They put three-point-four billion more into roads. They were adamant that they were gonna do it without raising taxes. That meant that that three-point-four billion dollars had to come from somewhere else. And in the backdrop, right, we had less revenue with the May Revenue Estimating Conference. The big beautiful bill has some downward pressures on future funding for the state of Michigan based on some corporate tax structure stuff, based on future Medicaid stuff. And so, you know, what you get is essentially a five-billion-dollar cut in the House budget. The Senate's first budget was done before that May Revenue Estimating Conference, and so it used January numbers, which meant it was already a little high. I think if you talk to Senate Democrats, and again, this is broadly, not individual members, but just sort of by chamber and who's in control of each chamber. I think Senate Democrats would tell you that they really want to value protecting those human services. If there's downward pressures on the budget, I think what they would say is, you know, yeah, doing some stuff on roads would be nice, but maybe they're not hearing from their constituents that we need to fix more roads. I know some people are very frustrated that the orange barrels have been out in flux this year. And so, you know, I think, I think the roads piece has been the number one sticking point. And again, the Democratic governor came out and said, we want to do something on roads. And so while their plans were very different, you know, Governor Whitmer's plan for roads was identify a half a billion dollars in cuts and then the rest in new revenue. The Republican Speaker of the House and the Democratic governor were aligned from the very beginning on doing something on roads. But the devil's in the details, and it's always harder to negotiate a budget when you have negative pressures on a budget rather than new revenue, right? So I think that's sort of how we got here. I don't know if that answers your question, or if you've got some more specifics you'd want me to touch on.
Anyone else? Ma'am?
Thanks, Mike, and thank you so much for giving us a little good news, because I had a MAC meeting earlier this week and that was much more doom and gloom of this is, this is gonna go on, we're not getting anywhere near. So that is good news, I think. A couple of questions first. If, if we don't close, it's irrelevant, or if it's only a couple of days, I'm sure it's irrelevant. But I was curious about the courts. Since the judges are paid from the state, I believe, would that shut the cuts, or would that shut the courts down if the government shuts down?
Yeah, and this is.
Gratitude of the governor.
That's the real question, right, is what does the governor deem essential, right? And so there's things, I always use corrections officers, I, I don't think any governor in any party at any point in history would, would say correction officers can't show up to work, you know, because it's, because of the budget shutdown. Courts is interesting. And, and it could be that certain court staff are deemed essential and other court staff are not. And so maybe it's limited services, right? These are the types of things that we're looking at. Secretary of State's office, another example, branches could be closed, but maybe online services are still available to folks. We just don't know what that looks like. The other thing, if it's a prolonged shutdown, which again, I, I'm, after the last sort of 24, 48 hours, I feel much better that we're going to get a deal relatively quickly. But if it's a longer shutdown, you still run into an issue with essential employees who are told to show up to work, but they can't get paid until there's a budget deal. And so, you know, I think for a lot of folks, if, if you're not at your pay period day, that's fine because you don't feel it. It's not like you get paid every day. But the question is, the next state paycheck is October 9th, I think. You know, if there's, if there's not a deal by week two or week three, how many folks just start calling in sick, right? Those become issues as well. Folks generally don't want to work and not get paid. So I, I don't think we'll be there. I think courts is, is, you know, likely to feel some interruption if you're just asking me my gut opinion. Veteran services, you know, that'll be interesting. What, what does that funding look like? I think the public transit stuff and the schools usually get monthly payments the third week of October. So, you know, schools get what's called a 111 payment. It's, you know, 11 payments throughout the year of, of funding for their school districts. But again, if this is resolved by October 3rd or October 5th, that really won't be an issue, you know?
Okay. And my second question, Mike, if I can, was to Brian. And what, what percentage of our revenue for 2025 have we already received from the state for our operating budget here in the county?
Commissioner, I'm going to have to work with finance to put together that percentage. What we're seeing is from the bulk of the agencies that we work with. So roads, Public Defender's Office, Health Department. What we're in, what we're receiving is indications that our payments will be front-loaded. So we anticipate getting the October payment plus the November payment in the event of the state shutdown. The real concern is that as we get into November, then what comes next? So for us, I will ask the finance team to, to give us a percentage of how much we've collected. But the thing I would want to stress to you all is from Michigan Transit, or I'm sorry, Michigan Transportation Fund, we anticipate getting two payments during October instead of just the one. Similar for public defense through the Michigan Indian Defense Council. And then lastly, we're anticipating the same for, for some of the other state, state-funded out.
Great. So as long as it's short, we're, we're fine.
If, if it's short, we're going to be totally fine.
Great. I would like that number though.
The, the other thing I remind folks are if you're a, if you're a sportsman, you know, maybe grab your hunting licenses by September 30th. I think that might get shut down for a couple of days, so.
Julie, did you have anything else? By the way, I think the judicial pay is part of a blended formula that was put together 30 years ago or more where they equalized judicial salaries across the state. So a judge in Eaton County gets the same as a judge in Beryn or wherever. And we pay about a third out of the county's general fund.
Mr. Chair?
Any other questions? Just sir?
Just as I was answering, we have received 33% of state payments. I'm sorry, we are still owed 33%. We have collected 67%. Yep.
Yes, sir.
So I got a text message asking me to remind me to ask this question. What about the schools where it comes to the lunch programs for the kids? Because the schools are already sending out letters informing parents they may have to pay or start paying for the school lunches. How, how would that program affect that program?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, so we kind of have to go back a couple of years. So when COVID happened, there was all this one-time money, right? So one of the things they did was, once schools reopened, was said, we're going to take some of these dollars and we're going to fill the gap. So, you know, federal government has paid the free and reduced lunch population for a long time. But we're going to say every kid, you know, regardless, is going to, you know, be eligible for breakfast and lunch at no cost. That was formalized maybe two cycles ago in the budget. And so it's been a line item in the state budget to fund breakfast and lunch for all public school kids. That's been in the budget. I think part of the, the letter that's been sort of confusing has to do with fiscal years. You know, schools are, are on a January 1 fiscal year and, you know, you go back on either side of Labor Day. The state's fiscal year runs through September 30th. And so the budget year we're in for another five days funds school breakfast and lunch for all kids. The problem is, without a budget deal, and typically we get this by the 4th of July, schools don't know if that funding will be in a final budget deal. And so schools are saying, listen, if the legislature funds this, we're going to keep this program going. But we don't know what the school budget looks like in totality yet. Maybe we could even eat it as a local district, right? If, if, you know, revenues are, are high enough in our per pupil allotment, maybe that's a decision our district makes at a local level to continue to do that. But they don't know. They don't know how much money they're going to get. They don't know if that's going to be funded as its own line item. And so I think because of the uncertainty that the schools have, because we don't have a budget deal, they're trying best they can to communicate to parents that like, hey, you're covered through September 30th. We have no idea what this looks like on October 1. And that's, I think, causing some confusion. And, you know, listen, I've got a 10-year-old and an eight-year-old. And so I'm, I'm in that camp too, and we're just kind of watching and waiting. So I wish I had a better answer for you, I think. Don't hold me to this, but I think they'll continue to fund that program in a budget deal. That's just my gut.
There are no other questions. Mike, please continue.
Yeah, I just want to highlight a couple of bills that are, that are out there. You know, the Revenue Sharing Trust Fund, the Public Safety Trust Fund. Some of these things we might see move as part of a budget deal. Again, that's what makes some of this hard, right? If, if there's a modest cut to revenue sharing, but a massive increase to the Public Safety Trust Fund, you know, then, then folks have to weigh that. But we're waiting to see those things. And so we're watching those bills. I also want to highlight a bill that is up for a vote today, should be bipartisan, high level in the House. It has to do, I think it was Allegan County. I need to go back and check this last cycle, where they had a county commissioner who won the primary election and then passed away before the general election and before the ballots were printed. And there wasn't a process in state law to sort of figure out what do you do? It's a Representative Schmidt bill that I think stems from an incident in Allegan County that would just sort of say, if, in the event that somebody wins the primary for a county commission seat and they pass away ahead of the general, that the local party for, for that, you know, whether that person was a Democrat or Republican or Green Party or anything else, that their folks would decide who the replacement is. That's likely to move this week as well. We're still in gridlock. I know the budget's taking up a lot of oxygen. And my hope is that if we get the budget done, maybe we can, you know, use the momentum to get more done in divided government. I think we're up to 12 public acts so far this session, which is the lowest since, you know, 1940. I'm not expecting a ton of movement on a ton of tough things, but there's a lot of these cleanup things that I think can be really helpful.
Have we have a question here? Yes, ma'am?
I would like to ask, I heard on the radio this morning that our Cook nuclear plant is going to do something with the lunches and breakfasts for children to help it to continue. But is it, do you see where communities are going to be doing certain things to make things happen? Because I would consider that an emergency.
Yeah, I, I still think that it's most likely that it gets funded in a budget deal. And, and I, I think that's the most likely outcome. Obviously, I can't promise that. Negotiations are ongoing. But I think you'll see a lot of communities, whether it's through nonprofits, corporate partners or school districts themselves, just saying, hey, what does this cost us on an annual basis? I think there's a lot of folks that feel like simplifying that process is super helpful, not having to worry about, you know, chasing parents down because, you know, someone's account is negative or hey, this kid's got to get a peanut butter sandwich today. And so I think, I think we've seen maybe a shift philosophically across the state and folks saying, hey, this is a good thing. How do we keep it going even if the state funding isn't there? And so I hadn't heard that about, about Cook, but it would not surprise me if across the state there's those types of partnerships that pop up in the event that the state funding isn't there.
And, and, and that's what I think about is that it says it's affecting the farmers. I mean, you know, it's just everything, the, you know, the expectation.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Do you have anything else for us today?
Nope. Happy to answer any questions. If folks have questions about specific legislation, I know that the report we send tracks a lot of them. And so I, I never want to pretend to, to say that everything on my agenda is everything that you all care about. So if there's other issues that folks have interest in or, or questions on, I want to make sure I answer those.
Anything new on short-term rentals?
Some good conversations, I think mostly behind the scenes. I, I know that there's a bipartisan group of lawmakers working on legislation similar to what we saw last year. I know locally Rep. Andrews was a part of that. I think he continues to be a part of that. I don't think you'll see anything introduced until after we get this budget done. You know, the, the fight is really over, you know, what can the locals do? I know there's folks that, that are pushing on the, sort of on the Realtor side about, you know, it's a residential use and, and all of that stuff. I think the bipartisan group of folks largely representing, you know, more touristy areas, their, their philosophy is no different than last year. And so I think when we see something introduced, I think what you'll see is a, a ban on the ban, that no community can outright ban short-term rentals, but an express allowance that they can regulate them, that it's a commercial activity, not a residential activity. Some sort of a tax parity. That's where I think it gets really tricky because we have sort of a patchwork framework across the state on hotel taxes and those types of things. I think they're committed to not making it a double tax, meaning that, you know, if you're already paying something locally that, that any state tax on short-term rentals wouldn't, wouldn't double tax them. And I think maybe that's the holdup, but I think we'll likely to see some bills introduced either fourth quarter of this year or maybe first quarter of next year. Full disclosure, in divided government, at the pace that we're seeing bills pass this session, it'll be a tough lift. But I think the fact that it's a bipartisan package or will be a bipartisan package, I think is helpful in that.
Thank you. Anyone have anything else? Just sir?
Just a final question. I know this is kind of long, long view, but is there anything in this budget process that gives you an inkling that we won't be in this situation this time next year?
I think, I think so. I'm being optimistic. But a couple of things that I would just point to. You know, this is the first budget in divided government after a Democratic trifecta. And so everybody that agrees to whatever the framework deal is on this budget, and if it passes with bipartisan majorities, which it, it sort of has to, right? You've got a Republican-controlled House, a democratically-controlled Senate. So let's say we get 90-ish votes in the House and we get 30-ish votes in the Senate on a budget this year. I don't know how much you have to start over next year on a budget negotiation because everybody's sort of already agreed to this, right? And if we do some things on roads in this budget, then we've done some of those hard things. And so I don't want to say status quo budget next year, but it feels easier to say, hey, we all agreed on this budget, you know, in, in, you know, for the 25, 26 fiscal year. Now, as we negotiate the 26, 27, we're probably just doing some changes around the edges. We're not doing a wholesale rebuilding, massive negotiation in divided government for the first time. We already did that part. And so that gives me hope that, that maybe next year won't be as volatile and, and maybe just a little more status quo, what we got this year with just some little differences. The other thing I would say is, you know, next year's an even-numbered year and all of those folks in the House and the Senate would, I think, rather spend their summer and fall knocking doors than trapped in a Capitol. So sometimes that can help people make a deal too.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike. We'll look forward to hearing from you again.
Sounds good. If there's any other questions that come up, get them to Brian or the Board Chair. Happy to answer them.
All right. Any public comments before we break for committees? All right, we're adjourned. We'll be back at 10:30.